Okay, this time I'll call the Tuesday, February ninth, 2021 meeting to order. Larry McDevitt, Mike Steinis and myself, Jack Willie are the county supervisors. Lisa Smith is our county auditor, takes our minutes and Luanne Goke is our administrative assistant. And first on our agenda this morning is David Drier, the Jackson County engineer.
Morning gentlemen.
Good morning David.
Good news is I don't really have anything to have on the agenda.
Well, I had a call last night and the person told me I was supposed to tell the secondary roads. They don't know if it's because you've come on board or what, but the roads have never been better and never been maintained better in the snow.
Take credit.
He said they're going, they're, they're taking the snow into the ditch so that they can actually get by and he says it's so much better than it's been in the past. I don't know if they're changing their method, but this individual was extremely pleased and he said to tell you.
And I have one that said it's extremely thick on the gravel road. They said, yes, it is. It's just packed down so hard.
They were having trouble last week. All through and then now we're coming back, fill the ship with the drifts. They came in Saturday, so there, it was about eighteen hundred tons of salt purchased this year. So that's purchases already.
Well, it's deep. I, there was two things this morning on the way to work. I, once I seen that ATV or UTV was gonna drive on the snowmobile path, you know, it's all packed down in the field? Must not, because he was in this deep on that and there he sat. Was there all night. And then I seen a deer run into an open field. He was struggling. I mean, it's just that deep.
Well, they deserved to struggle. But we found out we cannot use City Hall, so it will be down at, at, at the fairgrounds. And so we will proceed. And hopefully we can either video it or do something ourselves since Karen will do that. Because we really do want the public to see your presentation. So we'll have to work something out between now and then.
Alright, so the we, we approved the rock contract last week.
Yep, that's all done.
Chair, and to sign, we have everybody but Rock River City.
Okay. I will sign them and bring them back over to you.
And then I'm this is just some information that Mike put together and I thought maybe you'd like to.
Great, great.
Some cost centers over the previous decades.
Thank you much. At this time, we're open to citizens and visitors if anyone wishes to address the board. Okay, Don Schwanker said, call me about Karen and the road meeting. So we booked it in the chat. Anybody else that wishes to present to the board? I don't hear anybody, so Brent isn't here, so Lisa, do you want to do your?
I can. Mine won't take very long this morning. I just need a motion to approve the minutes of the February second, twenty twenty-one board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
With a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the February second meeting. All those in favor? Aye, motion carried.
Motion needed to renew a Class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales to Bellevue Golf Club at three two two nine two, three hundred ninety-fifth Avenue Bellevue, effective April first, twenty twenty-one to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
Move to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the outdoor service and Sunday sales to the Bellevue Golf Course from April first, twenty twenty-one to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carried.
That's all that I have for the board today.
Okay, while we're waiting, I believe all of us have received some phone calls regarding the governor's mask mandate, lifting that. We have a resolution that our mandate goes through the first of April and that will continue in place. We will reevaluate on April first whether we will extend that. We're gonna just have to wait and see. I, I believe it would be important that more people get vaccinated before we lift that mandate. I, or that we have continued in Jackson County to grow with the cases. So at this time, I think my board concurs that the mandate will stay in place till April first and then we will reevaluate at that point in time. Just so you know that that's, that's the decision of the board that we're going to continue. Okay, Luanne, since Brent isn't here, do you want to come up and take care of your business?
Alright.
Good morning. I see you're ready for Valentine's Day with your red top.
Okay, the calendar is rather large this week. At noon today is the Bellevue Chamber Lunch and Learn for the Offshore Resort and we want to attend that by Zoom. At three PM is a Mississippi Valley Workforce Training Session by Zoom for Jack. Also at three o'clock is a nine-one-one Executive Board Meeting with Mike Day for Mike Steinis. And at four PM is the Macoka River Watershed Management Authority Executive Board Meeting by Zoom for Larry.
And tonight actually is the Oracle Society Board's meeting at seven, so I'll be at that tonight.
Wednesday, February tenth, at ten AM is a zero to five and sixty minutes meeting for Jack, and I think that'll be by Zoom.
Yep.
Thursday, February eleventh, at seven AM is Bellevue Hometown Pride Meeting. Probably also by Zoom for Mike. At ten AM on Thursday is an Iowa DHS Council Meeting by Zoom for Jack. At noon that day is the Jackson County Area Prison Association Meeting by Zoom for anyone who wants to go. And at four PM that afternoon is a local university planning committee conference call for everyone. Friday, February twelfth, at ten AM is Seventh Judicial Department of Corrections in Devonport or by Google Meet, I believe, for Larry. At two PM on Friday is the Regional Governing Board's Budget Session by WebEx for Jack. Monday, February fifteenth, at ten AM is Waste Authority of Jackson County Meeting for Mike. Also now at eleven AM, we'll be leaving for, I'll be leaving for the tour of the Delaware County Jail. So that isn't on here yet, but get there about noon, I believe. Five o'clock on Monday is Mississippi Valley Workforce Area Meeting by Zoom for Jack. At six o'clock is a Together We Build Meeting, but for Jack. Also at six o'clock is the Public Input for the Jackson County Water Trail Master Plan by Zoom for anyone who wants to attend that. And at six thirty that night is Mississippi Valley Workforce CEO Meeting by Zoom also for Jack. Our next regular meeting will be Tuesday, February sixteenth at nine AM. And that evening at six o'clock will be Conservation Board Meeting by Zoom for Larry.
You know how, I guess I should call Karen. You know how they posted conservation? I didn't see the last one on there. I've been looking to watch it. I didn't, I wasn't available to sit in it.
Is she out there recording though?
They're being recorded, ain't they?
We've been zooming, unless.
They're on Zoom. Karen probably isn't over there.
Unless she's on Zoom.
Maybe they need their, a channel set up. Maybe they just don't have, I don't know, maybe I have to ask them.
Pam is out of the office, so maybe a little different this time.
Emailed yesterday though, so she's in the office now? She's still out?
I think she's working from home.
Okay.
And we have Historic Preservation Commissioners to reappoint. There are four of them whose terms have expired because of the end of December. And that is Lee Caravan, Russ River, Jane Kilbert and Marilyn Osterhaus. And they have all agreed to be reappointed. And who terms will end twelve thirty-one, twenty twenty-three. Somebody for motion to reappoint those four commissioners.
Motion to appoint, reappoint.
I would second.
The motion and a second to reappoint. All those in favor? Aye, motion carried.
That's it for me and I think our
Like we have a crew.
Ready for the new committee?
Yep.
Sorry, we've got kind of an entourage this morning, everyone.
Okay, so the first order of business I have is I need to request that Stephen Thayer be appointed as a part-time deputy for us. Send that to the board.
Okay, do you need a motion for that? Yes, I would make a motion to appoint Stephen Thayer as a part-time deputy for Jackson County.
With a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye, aye, motion carried.
And then we'll be swearing three, those three deputies in this morning. I'd like to start off with reading something here quickly if the board doesn't mind.
We don't mind at all.
So let me interpret this. So it's kind of about the background of the sheriff's office. So the first of two important characteristics that distinguish, distinguish the office of sheriff from other law enforcement agencies is its historical roots. In England, the sheriff came into existence around, existence around the ninth century. This makes the sheriff the oldest continuing non-military law enforcement entity in history. The elected sheriff is part of America's democratic fabric. It's more than a tradition, it's a constitutional requirement. The second characteristic that sets the sheriff's, sheriff's office apart from other law enforcement agencies is its direct accountability to citizens through the election of the sheriff. The Office of Sheriff is not a department of county government. It is the independent office through which the sheriff exercises the powers of the public trust. No individual or small group hires or fires the sheriff or has the authority to interfere with the operations of the office. Elected sheriffs are accountable directly to the constitution of their state, the United States Constitution, statutes and the citizens of their county. The sheriff should naturally do his best to work with all entities because it is important in a democratic society. Sheriff must work with all segments of government to serve and protect the citizens of the county. The preservation of the Office of Sheriff is vital in our republic. Outside of few elected town marshals, the sheriff is the only head of a law enforcement agency in this nation that is accountable directly to the people of his or her jurisdiction. Each of us as sheriff can do our part to ensure a contribution to the preservation of this great office by following these principles. Remember those sheriffs who have served in our counties and across the nation before us and build on their successes by learning from their mistakes. Serve with integrity. Do not shirk the sheriff's responsibilities, duties or management rights to other governmental entities, unions or political influence. The sheriff alone stands directly accountable to the citizens for quality of service from the sheriff's office. No one fulfilled the sheriff's moral and statutory responsibilities. Not a mere formality, an oath of office is a public pledge that the official understands the requirements of the position and will work to meet or exceed those requirements. Those taking the oath must, sorry, those taking the oath must fully consider the meaning of the oath and all its important implications. This is why the oath of the sheriff's office is so important to me. My, by deputizing someone, I am entrusting they will not abuse their power and follow my intentions. We are entrusted by the public to do what is right, moral, ethical and legal. We must set and lead by example in our community, both on and off duty, to ensure we never lose the public's faith and trust in us. To be disloyal to this oath is perjury. It means you have been disloyal to your people. And that was, that's why that's very important for me to read that aloud and have my three future deputies hear that. So to start off with, we have Melissa Schmidt, Deputy Schmidt. And she is going to be, go straight to the road patrol for us. So Deputy Melissa Schmidt is a thirteen-year veteran police officer for Bellevue. Actually, maybe I should never stand up.
Come on.
Yeah. Okay, Deputy Melissa Schmidt is a thirteen-year veteran police officer for Bellevue, Preston and Sebula Police Departments. Previously, she had been the chief of police for Preston and Sebula. Schmidt took a break from law enforcement and taught, taught alternative high school for thirteen years in Clinton and Goose Lake. Most recently, she has worked the last four years for the Bellevue Police Department. Deputy Schmidt is also a nationally registered paramedic that works for Paramount EMS and Bellevue EMS. Schmidt is a graduate of the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy, Mount St. Clair College with a Bachelor of Arts degree in education and is a graduate of NICC's Paramedic Program. In her free time, Schmidt is an avid scuba diver that recently completed a rescue diver certification. She is happily married to her husband Dan and has six children. Deputy Schmidt is looking forward to serving the citizens of Jackson County as a Jackson County Sheriff's Deputy. And on a side note, she is also the first female deputy Jackson County has ever hired. Okay, now we do the subjective. Okay, what's that? I'm gonna swear in person. That's right. Okay, raise your right hand and repeat after me, Melissa. I, Melissa Schmidt.
I, Melissa Schmidt.
Having been appointed a deputy sheriff of Jackson County.
Having been appointed a deputy sheriff of Jackson County.
Under Brent Kilberg, sheriff of Jackson County.
Under Brent Kilberg, sheriff of Jackson County.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of deputy sheriff.
Discharge all the duties of deputy sheriff.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
If you have designated, that was gonna pin your badge on.
Just a tad.
My mom always wanted to be a police officer, but way back then you had to have height requirements.
We've removed those, so here's a chance.
Too badly, then they have platform shoes back then.
Okay, so Dan, if you want to join her up there, we'll get some pictures with you guys.
Sure, you can take it from my good side.
Okay, then I think I'll get a picture with you. Yep, welcome aboard.
Happy to be here. And welcome to Team Jackson County.
Okay, next we'll do Deputy Thomas from TJ Allen. TJ, if you want to go up there? So TJ and his wife are originally from the Macoka area. He received his Associate of Arts degree in criminal justice from Clinton Community College and his law enforcement certification through the Iowa Law Enforcement Academy. In his first five years of law enforcement, he has been a member of the Special Response Team, which is like a SWAT team, Crisis Intervention Team, was a field training officer and has been trained in a multitude of other law enforcement topics. Outside of work, he enjoys riding his family side by side and spending time with family and friends. Okay, raise your right hand, TJ. I, Tom Salin.
I, Tom Salin.
Having been appointed a deputy sheriff of Jackson County.
Having been appointed to deputy sheriff of Jackson County.
Under Brent Kilberg.
Under Brent Kilberg.
Sheriff of Jackson County.
Sheriff of Jackson County.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of deputy sheriff.
Discharge all the duties of deputy sheriff.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Now's your chance to stick him if you want to.
They must have practiced all these kinds of games.
Learn where to put your fingers and where not to. Ready?
Again, smile.
Alright. And then, give a shout with your TJ. Yeah, no, yeah, yeah. Okay, next Stephen Thayer. Stephen was born and raised here in Jackson County and has lived in Sebula his entire life. He began his law enforcement career in twenty eleven with the Sebula Police Department as a reserve police officer. He worked several years as a nuclear security officer and also as a federal correctional officer with the Bureau, Federal Bureau of Prisons before taking a position with the Preston Police Department. He recently became the chief of police for the city of Preston and is very excited to begin his journey as a part-time deputy for the Jackson County Sheriff's Office as well. He's very passionate about his law enforcement career and the community he serves. He wants to create a safe community for all our families to live in, free of drugs and crime. He feels that serving both the Preston and Jackson County communities will help him achieve his goals of providing positive police presence and be a role model for our younger generations by helping them make the right decisions in life. He lives with his girlfriend, her two kids and his two and a half-year-old daughter. When not working, he enjoys gathering with family and friends, camping, kayaking and being outdoors. Alright, Stephen, raise your right hand. I, Stephen Thayer.
I, Stephen Thayer.
Having been appointed a deputy sheriff.
Having been appointed a deputy sheriff.
Part-time of Jackson County.
Part-time of Jackson County.
Under Brent Kilberg, sheriff of Jackson County.
Under Brent Kilberg, sheriff, Jackson County.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge all the duties of deputy sheriff.
Discharge all the duties of deputy sheriff.
Part-time as now or hereafter required by law.
Part-time as here now or required, or hereafter, like required by law.
Yep, pretty good. Alright.
That wasn't nice.
Now let's center on the flag.
What a wonderful day for Team Jackson County.
This is great.
We're thrilled to have you all on board.
Alright, I think that concludes
Good luck.
Yes. Thank you.
Now the female deputy's name is what, Melissa, Melissa? When her mother took off her mask, she, we graduated together. When she took it off, I thought, oh my God. So that's why I went over there. I just thought, God, that's Jody. We graduated from high school together. She had red hair back then.
She had red hair and you had hair.
Yeah, I had hair and she had. Thanks, thanks. At least he does have hair. Sometimes way too much, but anyway. That's okay.
That is a wonderful day.
Yeah.
Wonderful day.
Okay, is Frank on, online?
I don't see Frank.
Is Don first?
He's in the hall.
Oh.
Who is?
So if we got a second before I forget again, on our trip up to Delaware, can we stop and eat before we get there? I mean, we went down there and it was like three o'clock before we got out of there and none of us had dinner.
Alright, can anybody hear me? Can anybody hear me? Can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can. Yes.
Okay, usually this doesn't work.
Good day. You're lucky.
Okay. Lee was supposed to join us.
I'm here.
Oh, you are? Okay, I didn't see you on the screen. That's alright.
Okay.
So what do you want me to do?
Who are you asking?
You.
Oh. Alright, well, we're here for two things. One is to reappoint four commissioners for another three-year term and the other thing is for review and approval of the CLG report. And I think it might be best if we go through the reappointment first because I have stated on the CLG report that they're already appointed. So can we, can we do that?
I think we did that already.
You did that already?
Yeah, Lisa, Lisa did that under her portion.
Oh, great. Okay, then our, then our CLG report is legitimate, so. I think you've all received a copy of the CLG. So I think you've all received a copy of the CLG report. And I think there are just a, well, why don't you tell us, is there anything in particular that you would like to go over or hear more about, or any corrections that you think need to be made?
You would know better than I would. Corrections that needed to be made.
We certainly hope that you reviewed this and are making a recommendation, that's what we said.
Okay, well, there are just a couple of things that I would like to go over because I, we'd like you to know what we do, is that okay?
I think that would be wonderful, the public wants to hear.
Excuse me, Jack, I didn't hear the rest of it.
But the public wants to hear what you're doing too.
Yes, yes, okay, so the CLG report just contains a lot of data about our names and addresses and your names and all of that. But there are two critical parts here. One is to report on our successes for last year. So I'd just like to go through what we're reporting on that. So I'll just read it from this. The Commission was able to make progress on our assessment of county-owned historic properties. We have been in contact with the County Board of Supervisors regarding our findings, and we are prepared to work closely with the Board regarding an ongoing maintenance plan for these properties. Second, we had planned to work with the City of Andrew and others to promote the rehabilitation of the Andrew Jail. Progress on this project has slowed due to limitations imposed by the pandemic. The Commission is available to proceed with the next steps on this project when the City of Andrew can return focus. In the interim, we continue to forward information about potential grants to the city. We have not completed the republishing of our Historic Property Tour booklet due to a problem getting correct paper size for the map, but we did reprint the book on historic limestone structures, and that will be available to the public. We had planned a tour of historic properties for 2020, but that had to be canceled due to the pandemic. We were successful in using the media for public outreach and to raise visibility and awareness. We participated on a radio program on two occasions. We published a newspaper ad of your proclamation of May Historic Month, Historic Preservation Month, and we published two newspaper articles. We also entered the Wiki Loves Monuments photo contest, which is a nationwide, actually it's an international contest, hoping that would bring publicity. And we completed a couple of 2018 objectives. They were putting a link to Jackson County Tourism on our Facebook page. And we're still working on a historic district nomination for the County Port Farm. We also continue to support two historic district nominations that would be downtown Macocata and downtown Bellevue. Although we have no jurisdiction over those, we are here to support in any way needed. The other thing I wanted to go over quickly is our, we're required to have a work plan each year. So our work plan for 2020 is included in the CLG report. We have quite a few items, but they're brief statements. First, the Commission is available to, for continued discussion with the Board of Supervisors regarding the maintenance of the county-owned historic properties. The Commission plans to work with the City of Andrew and other interested parties to promote the rehabilitation of the Andrew Jail whenever that becomes possible again. Meanwhile, we will continue forwarding information about grants that may be appropriate for that project. The Commission will continue to support the downtown Macocata and Bellevue Historic District nominations. The Commission plans to complete the republication of our Historic Property Tour booklet. The Commission plans to work with the media to promote historic preservation. This may include newspaper articles, captioned photos in the newspapers, and radio spots. We will continue to work on one historic property or historic district nomination for a new National Register site for 2021. Due to unknowns about the pandemic, the Commission has not made any definite plans for in-person educational programs or tours. However, here are some alternatives that we're considering. Prepare and record an educational program and make it available on the Local Access Channel and on Facebook. Add information about our historic properties to our website as space and time will allow. Prepare and record video tours of some historic properties and make them available to the Local Access Channel and our Facebook page. Conduct a walking tour of at least one civilian conservation corps site. Investigate the possibility of an app for self-guided driving tours of historic sites. Investigate the possibility of arranging for signs or plaques for historic properties. And ask you to again declare May to be Historic Preservation Month and promote the sale of our Limestone Architecture Book, especially during Preservation Month. In addition, we do plan to get the required education, we just don't know yet what that will be. So that's it unless Don has something to say or add?
No, not really.
Oh, come on. Is that really Don Wentworth on that?
Yes, it's really me, but Lee does a really good job.
Lee talks too much, you need to talk, Don.
The one thing that is kind of on our minds that is not covered by the CLG report is county support for the four county-owned, owned National Register sites. We did a review and a visit of each of those sites last year, and there are some things, I mean, I, I know that the benchmark is what will they be used for after they're rehabilitated, so to speak? Sometimes it's a matter of you have to build it and they will come, but all these sites have structural problems that need to be addressed one way or the other. And I don't want it to, and nobody on the Commission wants it to come down to, well, it's cheaper just to bulldoze them than maintain them. So that's something, and it's a, it's a situation we're trying to work on, take them up with something equitable, so the sites are preserved, but at minimal cost to the county. So that, that's just a conundrum that we've been working on. Other places, and I'm not saying county Board of Supervisors do this, but other places, historic structures are being raised because it's cheaper to raise them than it is to put on a new roof or tuck point them or whatever it is they need to be, have done to them. So that's, that's something that we're, we're thinking about how to do it.
Are you going to have each one of those properties evaluated and get some idea what needs to be done and what the cost involved is?
That is the plan. But it's, it's not as simple as that. But we are going to try and work through SHPO and anything, any other thing that we can to, to kind of get a ballpark figure at least of what needs to be done, how much it will cost, and if there are any grants or anything available to help with those costs. This is, this is a long-term project, it's not just, not just limited to 2021.
Sure. Yeah, we don't, we, oh, sorry. I, I was going to say, we don't think that all four of those properties could be done immediately. It could take several years doing one at a time. One of the things I found out is that we, they don't want it, remember when we got a TAM report on the Andrew Jail? That preliminary report about what needed to be done, an estimate of cost? Well, I talked to SHPO about that, and they said they don't want to do that unless there is a commitment to actually go ahead with some restoration. So that kind of puts us in a tough spot because that means we probably have to start looking for the, figuring out the costs ourselves because, because they don't want to do this unless they feel that there's going to be something actually done. So that is kind of a job for us to get, well, we'd have to decide which one to do first, of course, you know, I just do them one at a time because we can't really do four all at once. And also, I want to just remind everyone, including the public, that when you restore a property on the National Register, you can't just hire any contractor to do it any way that works. It's important to do it so that you maintain the historic integrity of the property, and that's where the Commission can come in probably most usefully because we can help advise on the way to do it so that we do maintain the historic integrity. Of course, that information's available to everyone on the National Park Service website. But we would be happy to help.
One, one property that comes to mind that something could be done about immediately is the Mill Rock School. That floor issue still needs to be addressed, especially if you're going to have people in there, kids in there. Every time I've been in there since, the floor has buckled with adults. Even though they know it's there, it's in several places, and they trip on it. So it's, it's very much a hazard. I'm not sure how much of a project that would entail, maybe Larry would have an idea. But that's something that could be maybe addressed immediately because the Mill Rock School doesn't really need a lot more than that floor issue taken care of. And then maybe we can use that as a starting point to launch into, say, Big Mill. Just as a suggestion, turn it into a, an Airbnb or something. But, but the Mill Rock School is something that's immediate, and it's, it's not a question about what has to be done. So that's, that's just a suggestion about something that could happen this year even.
One, one thing I would start with on that is to put floor registers in just for ventilation underneath the floor. I think with the, I'm not sure if there's gutters on that building or not.
I don't think so.
Okay, the gutters, the water would be falling close on the outside, and that's seeping underneath the floor, and that moisture is what's buckling the floor. So, and floor registers leave some airflow in there.
Right, well, the, the floor buckled because they did the floor before they fixed the roof, and water came in through the roof, and that's what buckled the floor. Not, not that your suggestions aren't good, I'm all for what you said. But if you go into Mill Rock, the, the light over the teacher's desk, the bottom globe is filled with brown water that leaked down and ran down the cord. So that, that's how the water got in there this time. I'm not saying it couldn't come in another way another time. But if you're do, if you're addressing that, you might as well address all potential issues at the same time.
Yes, there, isn't there a new roof on it now?
There's a new roof on it now, but the new floor was installed before the new roof was put on.
Well, I guess I, I would say we're all, we're all ears when you decide what you want to do or where you want to proceed. I, I, I know it has to be done historically, but I don't know, Lee, this SHPO, if, if, if they're not willing to come in, our, our big problem is we need to know what the cost estimates are going to be. And if somebody else can do that, that's fine. But if they won't come in and, oh, we have guaranteed, we can guarantee funding, oh, we, what the funding is going to be.
Right, it's always a catch-22, no matter what you do.
But we're certainly.
Go ahead.
I was going to say, we're certainly interested in maintaining them.
Well, I think we, we can maybe start with that Mill Rock School, that would be the simplest, and, and I don't know, Don, do you think we can get the estimates and, and bring them to the Board and?
Yeah, Charlie Saggers has already looked at it, and I don't know if Larry would be willing to look at it just for perspective. But yeah, I, for what Charlie, you, just for the buckling of the floor, I think we could get an estimate, and then I don't know who we would go to for, if we wanted to put on gutters and vents in the floor, but I don't think that would be a very big project or problem in getting that done.
I don't believe in the past I heard Larry say no to looking at something that didn't be done. So I'm sure if you find, find, he would be willing to come and look.
Okay, well, we'll probably wait till, till it gets a little warmer.
Yeah.
But yeah, I mean, if, if Larry wants to run down any time, he can get the key and just go and look, the problem is obvious.
I can't hear you.
So, you know, if he wants to do just that, when the weather gets warm enough to suit him, he can pick up a key and, and go and look at it, and then he can, he can let us know what he thinks.
I'm sorry.
I go to lumber once, they used to have some of the old half-circle get-when I used gutters.
Oh, yeah.
That, that's probably more historic to go on there. I'll see if they might have some of that, or if I can find some more.
Right.
And I just wanted to mention, I, I don't think that SHPO is unwilling to help us. It's just that when they do these inspections, it costs them money, and we get it free. So, you know, of course, they, they don't want to just do this for any situation if there's no potential for, for doing the work. But they will cooperate with us, they've been very interested in helping us.
Can I interrupt you?
Yeah.
Suzie here is raised her hand, so let me unmute her. Suzie, can you hear us? You have your hand up.
Susan, are you on? Did you wish to speak?
She went off mute for a little while, then she went back on. She must have hit it twice.
Hi, County, Mr. County Chairman, can you hear me?
Yes, we can now.
Thank you very much. I am a proud supporter of the Jackson County Conservation Committee. I am proud of the heritage of Jackson County Preservation. My question to Lee Caravan is, I have previously seen a copy of the history of limestone buildings in Jackson County, and I know that we were the first county in the state to submit this. I do know that that was wonderful, and to have it reprinted is outstanding. Could Lee tell us, please, how to obtain one of the copies of those so that we may peruse them and then try to promote them to people in the county?
I, I think Don would be a better one to answer that question, but at present, we have not decided on the cost. Don?
Yeah, the, the books will be printed by the Jackson County Historical Society pretty much as a on-need basis. They're, they might publish 10 of them just to have on hand as somebody walks in. Potential cost that has been talked about but not approved is $25 a copy. Requests would probably have to go through the Jackson County Historical Society since they're the ones that have it scanned in their printer and are set up to print it.
Thank you, Don.
If you're looking to have a copy at the, at the Interpretative Center, we could probably put one out there, couldn't we, Don?
Sure.
Or one or two, you know, and have one available there at all times for sale, maybe. Is that what, is that what you were looking for, Suzie?
Um, my name is Susan, I have Soprano because I sang the national anthem solo at a Twins game in 2001 in front of 36,000 people. But what the point is that I would like to have one personally. I personally think $25 is a reasonable cost, and then to be able to peruse them and to promote them throughout Jackson County. And I agree with what, or I appreciate what Don said a moment ago. So thank you very much for your comments.
Right, and, and be aware that the $25 is just what has been discussed, it hasn't been approved yet. So the price may vary if you want.
Yes, I am aware.
If you want to look at one, just to look at one, there are copies, new copies that are at the Jackson County Historical Society Clinton Engine site that you can come in and look at anytime the door is open.
Thank you, I will reserve that until the pandemic is over, appreciate it.
Okay, anything else, Lee or Don?
No.
No.
To approve the CLG report as presented. A second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the CLG report as presented. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Hi, motion carried. Thank you very much for your, your time and your efforts.
Thank you, and, and as always, thank you for your support, and have a great day.
You also.
Do we need to reappoint here to you?
We did.
Okay, next on the agenda is Frank Freebird. Okay, next on the agenda is Frank Freebird. Director of the Waste Authority of Jackson County. Okay, we have a copy of the resolution, whereas the Jackson County Board of Supervisors represents the townships of Jackson County in the selection of directors. For the Waste Authority of Jackson County, the Board of Supervisors here, hereby concurs. In the nominations of the following persons as members of the Board of Directors of the Waste Authority. For a two-year term from January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2022. They are District A, Jean Cosell, District B, Carrie Brown, District C, Nicole Manders. District D, Brian Bradycamp. District E, Kent Clausen, District F, Richard Rossman. Different, uh, District G, Jennifer Machati. District H, Tom Messerly, and ex-official member Mike Steinus. What is the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion to approve.
I would second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the appointments of members of the. Uh, Waste Authority Board of Directors, all those in favor?
I.
I, motion carried.
Have a good day.
You too.
Stay warm. Have your guys, have your guys be careful out there.
He won't be getting frostbitten.
Be a nice place to be when.
Yeah, it would. I see Julie is on, but is Mary Schisel um. On yet, Julie, do you know?
I don't, I don't see her. Is she waiting to be let in?
No.
Uh, no, she is not.
Um, well, if you're ready, I have the PowerPoint on my computer and I'm happy, she created a PowerPoint for us and I'm happy to share it with you.
That'd be great.
All right, um, I'm going to share screen, Alisa, is that okay?
Oh, oh.
We have it.
We have it.
Okay, um, I don't know, can you see it now?
Yes, we can.
All right. This is new to me, so I apologize if I'm not really good at it yet, all right, from the beginning. Okay, so um. All right, if Mary jumps on, I'm gonna let her take over. So Mary Chisel is our evaluator. Um, the first quarter of the grant year started um, September 30th and it ended December 31st. So that's the period that this report covers. Um, okay, so for the DFC grant, there are always two goals. One is to increase your coalition and the other is to reduce substance abuse. On the theory that you can't do the work of reducing substance abuse if you don't have a strong coalition. So um, the things that we said we were going to do to build our coalition were collaboration, training, and awareness um, in the community. So those were the three goals and here's what we did on them. Um, we're supposed to have 12 sectors involved in the coalition, the grant lists them. Um, I believe you can see a key to the left. We have all of them represented, um, not equally. Um, law enforcement and healthcare um, and substance abuse are kind of our three most common. We have 32 registered coalition members right now, um, covering all 12. No new members. We have, um, we're registering people differently, so that number I think will look different in the future. We have an executive committee that's kind of our steering committee that of six people. Um, and that includes Sarah Hobbs, Jane Schmidt. Um, Dee Flinker, Ellen Gackle, Cassidy Potter, and Carrie Weaver um, from the Bellevue Chamber. Um, so they meet monthly and they kind of drive this um, coalition. Our average coalition attendance has increased. What we've learned through virtual meetings is we have a broader. We have greater breadth of membership, but they're less engaged, it feels like, because you know, you're sitting at your own computer versus interacting with other people. So that is something that we um, are working on as a coalition. And our youth connection is very different this year because obviously we're not in the schools. And you know, we used to host a group at Macochona and Easton Valley. Um, like youth advocacy groups, and now we really can't do that, so we've had to find new ways to interact with our kids and we, we're working on it. Um, right now, the Bellevue, I believe it's called Media and Marketing Class, which is Tracy Ford is the teacher. They are working with us on developing a social media campaign developed by kids for kids and they're going to implement it for us. So we've found these new ways to interact with the kids. Um, so our goal is to provide training to our members. Um, so ATOD is alcohol, tobacco, and other drugs. Um, so in the first quarter, we had two trainings for our um, community and the members. One was um. Dr. Paul Gilbert from the University of Iowa. Um, 19 people attended that one and it was on um, alcohol and COVID. Um, alcohol sales in Iowa last year were at an all-time high, which I don't think surprises anyone. And so he talked about short and long-term impacts of that. And then at the November meeting. Dale Woolery, who is the Director of the Governor's Office of Drug Control Policy in Des Moines. Talked us about trends in Iowa and what he's seeing in his role. Um, we did have a new member orientation. And we did a law enforcement training in December, 19 law enforcement officers from Jackson County came. Um, we did do that one in person. We did it at Pearson Hall, so we could spread way out. And it was actually, um, it was on cultural competence, um, implicit bias and how we view and interact with others. Um, that was well received. Um, so how we're telling the world what we do. Um, the coalition now has a website in addition to the Facebook page. Um, our goal was to get that up and running and it is, it was launched on. I believe it was launched December 31st. And then of course, one-on-one contacts, finding, we have the sectors that are underrepresented in that pie graph. We want it to be more balanced, so we're talking with people in those underrepresented sectors and trying to get them involved. Um, we haven't had anything printed in the first quarter, but you'll see that number change in the second quarter because we've done a lot already on that. So these are the baseline numbers that we have um, for the core measures. Ideally, every two years, the state had done um, the Iowa survey. They did it in 2016, 2018. It should have happened fall of 2020. Well, the governor in one of her proclamations, I believe it was back in May. Um, pushed the Iowa survey off an entire year, so it's not going to happen until 2021. Um, for the grant, we really need the data every two years, so we've talked with the school districts and all three superintendents of the public districts in the county. Have agreed to do the surveys because they want to measure where their kids are at, even though the eye of the state isn't. Um, some of them are done, we're waiting on one to finish and then we'll have that data. And then it'll be nice, we'll have it again in 21 when the state does their survey. So, um, we have the base core measures and we're gonna look, we're gonna take this data in the second quarter and come up with some, um, hopefully progress. We are concerned that kids are struggling as much as adults are with the COVID and isolation, so we're just gonna wait and see what those numbers are. Again, these are what the baseline. These are the state, so our data is not on here yet. The state numbers are moving in the wrong direction and again. I don't think anyone's terribly surprised about that. So here's the things we were going to do with youth um, that we are continuing to work on. Or how we're reducing our youth substance abuse and our three substances, alcohol, opioids, and marijuana. And I think she has progress on each one. So um, alcohol, we've done a lot with media, um, information, talking with people. We've done our responsible beverage server training. We hadn't done any compliance checks in the first quarter, they've happened in the second. And the enforcement activities work better in the summer, the outdoor ones, so we're at zero on those just because. No one's going to stand outside in this weather and we wouldn't want anyone to for safety. Um, RX Drugs. Um, the national speaker again was held in January, so this chart is just one quarter. Our goal is to have everything at 100% by the end of the year. Um, we did do take back events, we'll continue to do those. We have Dropbox materials, they're going out in the mail, everyone in the county should receive them, so we have plans to get all those things met. Marijuana, we have training scheduled for this summer. Um, and we have a media campaign being created by the kids um, in Bellevue. So we will have all of those met as well. Um, this is just our progress from the first quarter. Um, so coming up from Mary, we will get that core survey report. You'll get a mid-year progress evaluation after, so January, February, March, so it'll cover through March. Then she'll do a third and a fourth quarter and do the year evaluation. Um, the, the mid-year and the year-end are actually much more detailed than the one you just saw. Um, and this will get reported to the national funder and in two years, we're going to be writing again for our second five. So this data will be super important as we write those, um, that grant for that second five years of funding. You know, Mary and I kind of went over it and, you know, it's one quarter of the year and the first quarter we get things set up and running. So I think you'll see a lot of change when the second quarter, second quarter report comes out. Any questions on any of it that I can try to answer?
No questions, but did, did you by chance see the Today Show this morning?
I did not. I can go back and watch it though.
There was a, a feature on a 16-year-old boy. Who you, what, you saw it too, Larry? Anyway, he, he was, um, his mother was a doctor. Um, and anyway, um, he was somewhat depressed, I guess, and anyway, he went online. And um, whatever, whatever, wherever he went. They told him how to mix some things together that should help him. Well, he mixed them together and it killed him. His parents found him in his bedroom on the floor. Beautiful young man, just the saddest thing and it just made tears run down your eyes that they just. Don't understand what's going on. And so they're doing an investigation about online drugs. And so I hope they can come up with something and she is, oh, kind of a spokesperson now for this. And it just happened not too long ago. But you know, kids really just do not understand the reaction that they'll get from some of those. Drugs and it's, it's so sad.
And what I had heard was you're more likely to die from a drug overdose now than from a car accident. That's really scary.
On January 28th, we hosted a national speaker. He calls himself Tall Cop, says stop, and we had 205 people join us, which we were super excited about. But he talked a lot about legal substances, kids taking cough syrup and all these things and mixing them or taking way too much. And most of his focus was on things that are legal and easily accessible to kids. Um, Mary Chisel is on the call. Um, hi, Mary. We kind of went through um, the PowerPoint, but I did want you to meet, so um, I believe our chair this year is Larry McDivitt, right?
No.
Jack Willie, and then Larry McDivitt and Mike Steinus are our other two supervisors. Um, and yeah, so we kind of went through the progress and you know, what we need to do and I think we're on target if you want to add anything to that.
Well, we will have the outcome data measurements as a result of the core surveys. That they're getting ready to do. Right now, what you primarily saw in that PowerPoint is. Goal one, information. About process. And the uh, data is actually the uh, goal two information. For the substance use reduction. Uh, strategies. What time did you start?
10.
Oh, because I clicked and it said, they'll let you in soon. I, I clicked a little bit before. So, anyway. And I, I think the, the biggest thing I want to say there is that. It's kind, I know the evaluation is kind of a burden on the coordinators. Because I do require them uh, to track. A lot of information, since I don't live in your community. I need to be able to see who's involved doing what. Because part of a coalition is that it is not an agency. It is that the volunteers and, and their support partners in the communities are, are doing things to help with this. Uh, because the strategies for a drug-free communities grant. Are, you know, it's the old saying, multiple strategies and multiple domains. And no one person can do all of that. And you need people within power, with power in the several different community sectors. Your schools, your law enforcement, uh, your unofficial community leaders through your service clubs. Things like that in order to get. Really, community change level measurements, because that's what we're looking at. You know, this does not measure individual change for individual students. Is where she's trying to move or the coalition is trying to move uh, an entire. Community. So that includes adults as well as youth, so. That's my little evaluation lecture. For this morning.
Well, you have to have a team.
Yes.
He has to know what the, what the goal is and you have to work together to try to achieve those goals.
Well, and that's why I track under each of those strategy things. I track everything from meeting attendance. To which groups participated in what activities. Because for meeting attendance, if your people aren't there. You spend all your coalition meeting time trying to catch people up.
Oh, absolutely.
So um, because nobody reads all the stuff that she faithfully puts together and sends out. We all know that. There are some who probably skim it, but uh, we've all been on enough groups and committees where we know we can. Just kind of go through and kind of try and pick out quickly if anything big is going on. But then later on, we have questions and say, well, how come we didn't do it this way? Well, that's because at this other meeting, we talked about. This is why we chose that strategy. I'm sorry, there's my dog. He barks at everything.
It's cold out.
Just give him a bone.
But I have been evaluating grants for quite a long time and I was. One of the original coalition coordinators for this, in this state of Iowa. For 20, over 20 years before I retired and started my consulting business. And I not only evaluate grants, I, I read and score grants for several federal departments. And so I know what they're looking for in measurement. And especially if you're a continuation grantee, how you better be able to demonstrate and prove what you did.
Absolutely.
Well, the reports certainly show during, during this period that we're in, that the isolation and the stress level has, has grown amongst people. Certainly does not help in, in that type of situation.
No, and it's really, really hard to get youth involvement right now. Um, so thankfully. Kids are much more comfortable with Zoom and, and all that kind of stuff than most adults are. And, and they don't have a problem with jumping on a meeting for a while. Um, in fact, it's probably easier for them with their schedules. So. But I do want to say this coalition has one of the highest volunteer participation rates. Of any that I am currently evaluating. And so that shows that number one. People are really dedicated. They really believe this is an issue and work needs to be done. And number two, that the coordinator does a good job of keeping them informed and engaged.
I would have to agree with you. Julie does a great job and it's, you know. We all realize that there are problems and all we have to do is try to come up with some solutions and they're working hard to do that.
And the thing is, most people have a, you know, communities have a tendency and a nation as a tendency. Uh, to let things go until there's a crisis. And then all of a sudden, it's a big deal. And then all of a sudden, it's a big deal. But even once the rates start to go down, you can't just wash your hands of it, because it'll creep right back up.
Nope, and when you get that crisis, it can't be healed overnight.
No, the thing is, you want to try and avert as many of those crises as you can.
Absolutely.
So. But my job is a, a data diva. I'm a number cruncher. And, um, so it's important to me, I'm very appreciative that your schools are on board, so that you have a good participation rate from your youth in your core surveys. Because with the state not doing the Iowa U survey last year and deciding not to do it again this year, if you didn't have the core surveys, you'd have no way of knowing where you're at. And if things that you're doing are beginning to make a difference, or if you need to readjust your strategies. Now, I have heard the state is gonna go next year and try and do the statewide survey that they report out by county. But my philosophy and my experience has been with state and national government is once the money for something is pulled away and used for something else, you have to put up a great big fight to get that money back, to get those resources back. And so it, it's gonna take, uh, everybody to keep reminding the state how important it is to have that data in, not just to let us know at the local level, but, you know, that impacts your economic development grants. It impacts, you know, everything. So we all have to keep nagging away at the state over this next year to make sure the money is appropriated for that survey. You guys will be okay because you do the core survey. You know, Julia gets in there with the schools and thank God for Survey Monkey, you know? But, uh, there's lots of other places across the state that don't have the, the funding to fund somebody to pull that effort together. So it's important that we nag the state about data.
The results of the surveys and the data is very important in awareness for the long-term consequences, you know, is, is, is the thing, you know?
Yep.
That make them aware of long-term, you know, this is fun right now, but, uh, twenty years down the road, you know, it's gonna affect somebody or your family or whoever it might be, you know?
Well, you know, that, I think one of the best examples is the national movement on marijuana. Where adults and youth are both thinking that it doesn't put them at risk. And, uh, I always look back to that commercial, the first time I heard it, I had, huh, that's right, is, uh, yeah, keep smoking marijuana, and you too can sit in your mom's play basement and play video games all day instead of getting a job. You know? It does. It may not have as drastic consequences you were just talking about, the death, but it, it, it can impact your entire future. And believe me, us, us parents and grandparents don't want those kids in our basement. We have a life to live, you know?
And we want them to be able to live.
Yes, we want them to be successful.
Yep.
And that they're ready to help take care of us old folks. I'm retired, you know? In emergency, they're there to be able to step in and help out a little bit, so.
Well, it certainly starts at home also.
Uh, the thing is, teenagers are sneaky. We all know that. We were all teenager ones. There were things we didn't want our folks to know we were doing. Uh, some more than others, and some worse stuff than others. But that is the nature of the beast between, with a pre-teen and a teen. They're, they're striving for independence. And they just don't think it's any of your business what they're doing, you know? But it is. So.
Amen, amen.
Now I have a dog with a squeaky toy, Frank.
Oh, you should have gave him a bone.
He likes his squeakies, you know?
Well, thank you very much for your report.
Well, and I'm sure I'll be back after we have some core survey data.
We'll be looking forward to it.
I don't like to wait until the end of the year. I like to go over that while it's still fresh, so.
Julie knows how to get ahold of us.
Okay.
There's contact.
Well, it was nice meeting you.
Nice meeting you, Mary.
Thank you.
Let's swallow the sweet squeaky toy.
Okay, according to this, uh, boards and commission reports, anything on nine-one-one, anything on TAG?
Uh, yeah, actually, we have nine-one-one, maybe today we have a consultation with Monday, this afternoon at three o'clock, and, uh, and give us presentation on maybe, um, like in-car repeater type things or something that can boost our reception and of, of course, we've all seen the price tag of this new system, new towers and enhanced, uh, so, um, we're looking to try to figure out a way that's reasonable to.
So there's, the state has three towers in Jackson County. We run off of those.
Just for mobile. Not for in-b buildings, it's not for, that's just mobile. So if you get in a school or you get in a building somewhere, yeah, you need better coverage, you need, so we think that we can, we've been, Lynn's been, he had one in his car, so he's been in remote spots and
Testing it.
Testing remote spots in buildings and see what kind of reception we can get, so. It's an ongoing process, and it's, and like I said before, it's very concrete. Unless you've been in it a while and said, listen, I can understand it all. We did have a TAG meeting also, uh, and that is a transportation group, um, so there's a lot of good participants in that, and we're looking for, always looking for new ideas or what might be needed. We talked about maybe once a week or once a month or once every two weeks, having a route from Miles, Preston, Semulia area up here to McOcotah to Fairway Walmart and, you know, and take them back and forth, and, uh, of course, the Valtro program's gonna come back for, um, the Farmage Market again this year. Uh, I believe they're gonna have, do some interviews and do some spots on KMAQ. Um, there's gonna be free rides again this year. So, yeah, that's very positive. And again, if anybody's got any idea of what we might need to get people back and forth. You know, and it's, and it's not just for the elderly or the disabled, or it's for everybody.
Anybody.
Yeah, so, um, if the teenagers need a ride to the YMCA, and you can get a group together, for instance, you know, and or someplace or to a ball field or, uh, maybe Prairie Creek, you know, I don't know, it's, it's all optional. Out there on the table, and there's, it's funding available for it, and, uh, they're doing a great job with it.
Well, I think, um, we're going to have a little work on our budget, and, um, and we're gonna be discussing the Penrose Annex after that, so, um, our actual business for the day is over. We'll have the two work sessions, and so we have a motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion to adjourn.
I would second that.
The motion and a second to adjourn our meeting. All those in favor? Everybody have a happy Valentine's Day.